To tonight's city council meeting. It's 7:07, so I'm sorry, I started two minutes late. First item on the agenda tonight, actually, is our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. And I think that Pastor Humes is here tonight. I saw Juan running around here with a boss hat on.
Yeah.
So Pastor Humes, if you want to lead us in our invocation and stay standing for the pledge of allegiance afterwards, thank you.
First of all, just good evening to everybody. And I'm going to ask us to do something a little different, if you don't mind, because it kind of was put on my heart. You don't have to touch, but if you can just reach towards somebody. So we'll make a connection, a spiritual connection, not necessarily the physical connection. Amen. If everybody will just take a minute to close your eyes, bow your heads, and open your hearts. Father, we come here tonight to lift you up. Lift you up through our words, our thoughts, and our actions. Help us to be go beyond what we think and what we feel and move into your space, Father. Help us, help our leaders here today, the mayor and those on the council, and all of the leaders in the various auxiliaries of our city. Help them make decisions not just by, for today, or for tomorrow, or for next week, but for the generations, Lord. Help us to, to, to open up our hearts and our minds and that you will open up the windows of heaven and begin to pour out your blessings. Pour out your wisdom, your discernment, your understanding, Father. Not for us, but for children and their children and their children's children, for generations yet to come. Let what is here spoken here tonight will be a plant in the ground, a stake in the ground, that from years from now, when we're no longer here, our children would look back and say, thanks to our parents, our, our leaders, for having the insight to make the right decisions. Help us, Father, tonight, to remember that it's not just about our city. It's not just about our, 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 our state or our nation. It's not just our families, but it's the family, your family, Lord. Bring us together, unite us as never before. Tear down the walls that separate us so that we can all live together in these United States. Help us, help our leaders, Father, make the decisions that are not good for right now, but for our next generations yet to come. Help us put on our long-distance glasses so that we can see further, go further, do more, and speak more to those who we have not seen. Help us now, Father, to fulfill your purpose and not our own. We ask this in your precious Son, Jesus' name, knowing according to Mark 11:22, 23, and 24, what Jesus turned to his disciples and said, "Have faith in God; for if you do, you can tell the mountains, whatever the obstacles may be, to be cast into the sea. If you pray, believe, and have no doubt, then what you pray for, huh? Lord, your word said, it shall be done." So, Father, according to your word and not ours, this thing is done, is done, is done, and the blessings are coming, coming, coming. In Jesus' name we pray. In Jesus' name we pray. If you want to say it with me this time, then in Jesus' name we pray. Let everyone say amen and thank you.
Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Lisa. All right, please let the roll call show that all council members are present.
Mayor McFarland, I've moved that we approve, move approval for the city council regular meeting minutes from October 5th, and that we accept for the record the Casa Grande Youth Commission minutes from June 25th, the Casa Grande Youth Commission minutes from September 12th, and the steering forum minutes from August 13th, 2020, as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, next item is item D, claims.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims date of September 30th, October 13th, 2020, as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded for the claims against the city. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Claims are approved. Meeting agenda approval, is there any change in the meeting agenda? Staff? Anyone from the council? Seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the tonight's meeting agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That was an aye from me, too. All right, next item is the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we pull G7, consider resolution number 5265, that we pull that one for discussion.
For further discussion. I have several requested the same here, so I have one from the public who is here, and then I have two letters also that have requested for us to have further discussion on this matter. So we'll pull G7 off and consider it after the approval of the, the remaining consent agenda items. If I can get.
Mayor McFarland, I move we accept the consent agenda, except for G7, which has been removed as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Hattleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, since we pulled G7 off, last item on the agenda, this is resolution 5265, which was authorizing the grant application to federal transit administration by the Arizona Department Multimodal Planning Division. So I know I have several comments here, one, one in favor of, so do, should, do you want me to read these into the minutes, or can I give them to Gloria and paraphrase them?
Mayor, generally, comments that have been received, according to our rules, become part of the record once they're given to Gloria. They generally are not read into the record.
Okay.
But they are part of the record once they're given to the city clerk.
Okay, well, I'll, I will give, this is one from Ernie Felice, and he is actually in support of the public transit, so I'll give that to you. And then I think the person who is here who requested to be pulled would just like further discussion, and I know there's some, also some discussion that the council wants to have, so I'll, I'll open that up. And then this is from Mike Henderson, I guess Mike is here also. So Mike was giving his opinion on, on this. So you have that one, Gloria, I think you have that one, don't you? Okay. And then I think that's it. So here, I'll give it to you. Comments, questions, follow-up?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would you like staff to present the RCA? I know that the council was provided a study session at the last meeting, or?
Sure, abbreviated version, I mean, we've heard it a couple times, so.
Sure.
I don't know that we need to get, unless, unless there is a need or a want by the council to, to review it in depth. Maybe just a top line, Kevin? And maybe what, you know, what's the cost to the city and that sort of thing?
Sure, the recommendation was for the mayor and city council to approve the execution of a grant application agreement and the expenditure of funds for $24,500. That's our 10% share. ADOT will apply for those federal funds, and then, once we receive those federal funds, we'll be spending the $245,000 to provide the additional study into the transit program as, as was discussed at the last council meeting. So from there, I can, we can try and answer any questions that you might have.
Well, I think a couple of the concerns that I saw, one, it was that we were going to concentrate, or we were going to review the, the different types, right? So we had, we already had a study that we had out there that had the bus stop type stops. And then you, you're going to, this study will also send out a survey, correct?
Yes, we're going to do, we're looking at the impacts of COVID-19 on transit and the rider ships. We're going to look at the fixed route and should we offer demand response for the first year. Those types of questions will be, be attempted to be answered. We're going to update the costs and look at the time since the plan was completed and presented to council last time. We're also going to be looking at council feedback and then surveying employees in the industrial area, something that, more than what we did the last time. And we received $2.3 million for, from the CARES Act funding, and we were looking to spend the $245,000, so that was the plan.
Yeah, Matt, go ahead.
You know, I'm kind of torn, my concerns with this is, is number one, you know, the old adage, if you don't have a plan, then you're planning to fail, right? So we need some sort of plan, we have one, which we've been told is not adequate. My real thing is the cost of this, I mean, you could buy three vans that I think what we're looking at for this amount of money that we're doing a study on, I think, and I'm not against the transportation, I, I think this is a great thing, I'm just trying to figure out a way to get it done less expensive and quicker than this study. I don't know if there is a way. I mean, we've done it before, but it's just the, the, most people that I've talked to, the heartburners with the cost of this, I mean, it's very expensive study for our, you know, for 50,000, 70,000-person town, which we already have a study. But again, on the other side of my mouth, I'm going to say, we need a plan or else, you know, that's kind of what, you know, it's Mr. Henderson was saying, too, is what, what we need to concentrate on what our goals are with this thing. So the timing and the cost would be my two biggest, not the time, but the time it takes to do the study, so.
And how long was the study for?
I'm going to let some smarter people than I respond to that.
And I want to say it's not against you guys at all, like, I mean, we want to get this done, it's just, you know, I have people talking to me saying, you know, we could hire full-time people for a year, you know, whatever.
So at the last council study session, you, I think you asked the question, or Donna did, I couldn't remember exactly, and the, the biggest bulk of the cost is going to be this employee-based survey. These are going to have to be paper surveys, you know, and a lot of footwork and handwork in putting all the data. In a typical study, we typically spend about $80,000 in our public engagement, anywhere from 80 to 100,000. We've, that's where the bulk of this money, and we don't have to do an employee-based survey, absolutely not. We could do this as a technical update, maybe take the 24, you know, thousand dollars and use that to do a technical update. It'd be very quick, and yeah, I mean, that survey is going to be where the bulk of the money is going to be coming from.
Go ahead, Mary.
So who, identify the employees that, the numbers and who they are, what is, who are the employees you're going to be surveying? I'm assuming they're employees throughout our city.
Sure, at the last study, we did, you know, mostly employers. But, you know, like along Florence Boulevard, we found McDonald's and Burger King and all those employees had a real interest, it seemed like, in transit. Then the Lucid employees, Abbott Labs, all those out in that, that direction. So, you know, as many of the employees around town as we can find.
And that's what, yeah, and that's the thing that I'm saying here is, those are the people that have the need, those, and that they, they are one of our targeted, main targeted areas. And again, hopefully, we would look at the cost, but I definitely see that it's a cost that, that we need to spend. You know, again, be cautious, be frugal what you can, but these are the people to meet who are going to be the majority users of that system, and I feel it's extremely important that we hear them. And, and, and then, and you have employers. Employers, they're here in the office. They're not there trying to start that car that's not starting up, or they're not there when the wife has to use the car to go to the doctors, you know, that sort of thing. That's the people I want to hear from.
Yeah, we got that definite feeling when Irene and I interviewed a lot of employers that maybe they didn't really know if their employees wanted to use transit or not.
So you think that study's going to be about 80,000, just for the study?
Well, we're kind of guessing on these costs.
Survey, I'm sorry, the survey.
You know, we spent 80,000 in the last one for public involvement, and wasn't near as extensive as we're looking at now.
Okay, so it'll be more, you think it'll be more? Okay.
You know, what we would, we don't have to spend the 245, that was just a number, and we would negotiate with a consultant what seemed like a reasonable cost, maybe it's 145, you know, we really don't have a.
Well, I think, I, I guess that's my, that's my area of concern, because that is a large number to, to throw out, and, and I'm not saying that I don't think it would be done efficiently at all, I don't, I don't feel that, but, but what I'm hearing is the cost factor is, is a lot. And what we have found in the last six months in our community is that we have gone virtual in, in so many different ways, and it seems to me that, that perhaps we need to look at how we can do that survey more efficiently and quicker, as, as Councilman Herman said. But I just think that that's a large number, a, a large portion of money that we're talking about that could be used in a better way. And I agree with you, Mary, I think that we do need to do something. I think, for me, and what I'm hearing is just the cost factor of this study is so extreme, it's more than what we even did the first time around.
So if it's, it's the numbers, it's not, you know, it's, it's not the counting of the, of the users, because that's basically what this is going to be, is the counting of you, it's the amount of money it's going to cost, is what I'm hearing, that's giving you heartburn, it's the amount of money that it's going to cost. And so I guess if you all could somehow explain to us why going that, taking that step is such a big number.
I, I have a question before you answer that one. Can, how, this is federal money, right? I know, I don't want to waste federal money either, but does it, what does it have to be used for? Because a lot of times, federal money is tagged, right? It, it's got to be used for specific expenses. So what does this money have to be?
It can only be used in transit.
Okay, but anything transit, could it be used to buy buses, to Matt's point?
It can be for operating capital and planning, and this study would be a planning study.
So operating expenses and planning?
And capital expenses, so.
Oh, and capital expenses, so you could buy a bus with it?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Bob?
Will we see this again? I mean, this is a grant application, so if, if it's approved and the money is dispersed, before you contract with the, with the survey provider, will we, will we see that again?
Yes, we still have to put out an RFP to hire a consultant. We, of course, will come back and let you know what's going on, so. It is through the MPO, money's going to the MPO, and then, then to the consultant to do the study. I don't know if you want to say anything more about that.
So that was how we had thought would be the funding with the, the agreement would between, the IGA would be between Suncor or MPO and the city of Casa Grande, and then that would be a pass-through to the MPO for us to manage the study. So we would put the RFP out, our board, our executive board is already gave, given us approval, should we decide to go that route, to go ahead and put an RFP out to do the study, and to select a consultant.
Okay, it ju, it just seems like the, the rub is we're spending a quarter of a million dollars plus on a survey, and I don't know that that's entirely accurate. It seems like this is, this right here is a grant application for that fund. And, and a lot of times, grants are for, for a larger amount, and you only spend a fraction of it on the.
So we can't directly apply for the CARES Act funding. So we have to have ADOT apply for us, because to, for us to apply directly, we would have to be designated to receive federal transit money by the government, and we don't have that right now. Now, we are working on that concurrently with all this. So if we had that designation, we could just apply for the money ourselves, but we can't, so we're asking ADOT to apply for the, that 245,000 for us. So that's, and that is a grant, more or less, you know, all this money is really grant money from FTA, it's just more sure than that, you know, it's not, we're not, it's not a competitive grant. The money's there, we do a good proposal, it's our money.
Matt, go ahead.
So if we say 200, up to 245,000, if this, if you can get the study done for 150,000, do we keep the rest to spend on?
On a bus?
Not a bus, a van.
A van, sorry.
A van, yes, a minibus, I mean, I looked them up, they're like 80 to 100,000 bucks, basically.
So whenever you submit your grant application to FTA, when ADOT submits that, you have to have a scope of work of what you're going to be utilizing that funding for. It has to be pretty detailed. I'm not sure exactly how that would happen, I don't know if we would have to submit, like, an amendment to that with that new scope of work, to include purchasing a van or, or whatever, but I'm sure it could probably be done.
Okay, and again, it's important to talk to those, I'm sorry, Mary, if I still can, to talk to those people, because a lot of employers I talk to, again, you know, when you're interviewing someone, can you make it to work? I mean, that's the most important part of work, right? Showing up, and if they can't get there, it's going to hurt them, it's going to hurt the employers, it's going to hurt their families, it's going to hurt everyone, so I want to be clear, I'm not against this, but I'm just, I want it faster and cheaper, you know, like everybody.
I'd like to say something about the speed of all this. So I've heard a lot of people say, let's just start right now. Well, the problem is, we got all these hoops with FTA we have to jump through. Irene and I have worked up a schedule of all the different things we have to do to actually start a transit system. If we, if we don't do the study, it's like the earliest we could start, actually start a transit system would be early 2022, and if we do the study, it would be later in the year, 2022.
So it doesn't, doesn't delay it that much? Okay.
Saves us some time, but not a hu, it's not a huge, that's like years or years.
That, that helps.
Okay, that helps.
Go ahead, Lisa.
And, and I understand, I mean, of course, being on the committee, and I've worked with these guys over the years on all this, so I understand your concerns about spending this amount of money and why can't we just use this to go buy a bus? But like Duane, and Duane just said it, it, it's not like we could just go buy a bus and start it. I mean, we, you know, it takes so much more, and then we have to apply for the funding that we've been losing over the years. We've been giving away the money that has been allocated to the city of Casa Grande, you know, to other cities. So it, even though we've moved on this, but now that we're getting closer, and I think with all of the planning and, you know, it's in our strategic plan, we know that we need something in the city, so I understand their point on allocating, maybe not the whole 240,000, but a certain amount of it to update the study, because there, we, I, I know what's going to happen, is when we get this done, everyone in this council is going to ask, did you talk to this employer, this employer, this employer, this apartment complex, this, you know, whatever? So I, we, we, because we only had so much money at that time, and time, and we were looking at the, the dollars that were going to be allocated to the city and how much we can do as a city, so we had, you know, a, a recommendation, but because, I mean, this is, and you, please correct me if I'm wrong, but because, you know, there, you know, we, the, the funding that's available with the COVID money that is being offered for this study, you know, this is a time to update it and reach out.
It's an opportunity.
Now, I understand, and, and Mike Henderson is here, and he was on the committee, and Mike, he's behind you back here, you know, gave us all an, an email with some recommendations, and I think Mike had some great recommendations on the, you know, the scope of work, you know, what, what's going to be included in this study, you know, what, who's going to be involved on giving input that we didn't have before? And I think that was my question that I brought up to Larry before we pulled this, because I was going to pull it also, is, you know, the possibility of, of expanding that, that group to include, like Mike mentioned, you know, real estate, you know, development people, employers, you know, of course, he had on here, you know, the medical community, which we had, I believe, in there at that time, on our, our old study, senior resources and, and agencies, but just to expand that group to make sure we're getting input on what the, the updated needs are. And if we're going to put it, implement the system, we want to make sure that it's as successful as can be. Now, Ernie Felice, you guys saw his email that said the demand response, he was against demand response, and I know the committee, our, the experts have told us, we have to be cautious about a demand response, because the minute you put a demand response, and that's if someone's going to go to your door and pick you up. The minute you put that in and try to go to a, you know, a stop, you know, where they're getting, you know, a bus stop, not bus, a van stop, dick, people won't, you know, because they're going to be used to you picking them up that, at their house. So, so it, you know, these are discussions that we, I mean, there, there's been so much, and, but I do want you guys to know that the amount of money that was spent, and I, I truly do believe that this is something because of the, the amount that's been allocated, you know, with, due to COVID, that this can help us move closer to where we want to go. Now, that the fat, you know, the, the speed of it, I was, I brought it up last meeting, too. We need to move, I mean, not two years down the road. And if we can bring it back a little and save some of that money, but 240,000's not going to get us too, too much on the, on the transit piece, but at least it can update the study and, but I think that scope of work is going to be critical on, on what we're going to include, and I think we have to expand it a little bit more on what was done last time to make sure we're, we're satisfying the needs. And, and that's what Mike brought up in the, in the email, you know, what are the council, what does the council want to do? What, what is the policy, you know, that we want to move, how we want to move this forward? But I feel as though this particular item is just applying for the money, and then we can determine the scope, or, or do we have to determine the scope before we apply for the money? I guess I want, you do. Okay.
The scope of the work.
Right, the scope of the work.
For the survey and, and what you want to study.
Right, and so, so maybe, you know, like Councilmember Hattleston said, you know, maybe we can take a look at that scope on what you are going to do more in writing, exactly what that scope is, and, and possibly the council can look at that to make sure that it's meeting our goals and what we would like to see, you know, I mean, just an idea, but I, I'm with you, Mary, I think this is something we really need to do, and I think it's a waste of.
You kind of outlined that already, didn't you? Did you guys kind of outline the scope of work?
There was a presentation. There was a good scope, but I will say there was a good, yeah, when I saw that.
In the presentation, the last.
And, and I got excited about the scope of work. So, and the idea that that's the money available that necessary, that's not what we're going to spend.
Yes, Matt.
A really good thing you said, Lisa, and it's kind of funny, is everyone up here's going to ask, did you talk to these people? And you're absolutely correct, because we've been through that on so many different issues, so I appreciate that comment.
I did, I did.
You'd be the first one, man.
I did send you, I sent both of you Mike's emails, so you can see what, what he's talking about, and maybe take a look at some of those, those comments. Okay.
You know, and I just, I want to say, I am in full support of us doing it, I think that we just, the scope of work, and the, the one thing that concerned me was that Mr. Henderson was part of this, and he brought these concerns up, and so it made me step back and think about, you know, at what level were those decisions made? And so that's my, my area of concern, so.
Anybody else have any other comments? Okay. Can I get an ordinance number, please? Nope.
Public comment?
No.
Nope.
Oh, that's right, we already did it.
No, because we don't have public comment right now.
Right, okay.
No.
Resolution number 5265, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing a grant application to the federal transit administration by the Arizona Department of Multimodal Planning Division for the world virus.
Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, Authorization for the Expenditure of Public Funds, Authorizing the City Manager to Accept Grant Funds in the Amount Up to 245,000 on behalf of the City of Casa Grande for the Purpose of Updating the City's Transit Development Plan, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Grant Application Agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation, Authorizing the City Finance Director to Accept and Disperse Funds as Necessary, and Authorizing the Transfer of Budget Authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 5265.
Second.
So if, is it too late to let, let me allow somebody to speak if they wanted to speak? I didn't mean to cut people off, I just was answering a question.
Mayor, it's always in your prerogative. Normally, you'd want to do that prior to the, you know,
Before the reading of the res.
Being moved on the floor. The preference for me would be that, that, you know, the, the second and the first would remove their motion if you want people to speak. But you can certainly, it's always in the mayor's prerogative to allow them to speak on the item.
Okay. Do you all have a problem with that? Okay. John, we didn't remove it because you sent in a note, it was removed by, by Lisa, so technically. But if you'd like to say something, please. Don't, don't have to, he'd prefer it, but we don't have to do that.
Thank you very much for, thank you very much for the indulgence, Mayor. John McGuire, 1748 North St. Francis Place. So I'm, I initially did mostly pull, put the form in to make sure the item did get discussed. I didn't think it was proper for it to be an agenda or a consent agenda item. But I do have some comments on this. I get it. My, I'm talking to, you know, literally thousands of people a day. And my feedback has been that on about a seven to one basis, people want transit. But on a five to one basis, they don't want to spend 250,000 on this study update. They get it that the, the money is guaranteed, the 2.5 million, if I remember correctly. And so there would be 2.25 or 2.3 million left. All that's just fine. People have just said, we've already spent 100 and something thousand dollars less than two years ago on a study, and now they're, we're going to spend up to, I get it. But that's, I can tell you right now, the comments are going to be, we approved 245, or you approved 245,000, the study's going to come back at 244,900. You know, that's just their feeling about it. And so I really, really want to impart that we should consider, the internet's a wonderful thing, as we're all finding out now. Can we do a study polling from the city standpoint using the internet somehow? Where it doesn't cost 250,000 to send mailings and, and the, the Excel spreadsheets these days can do calculations pretty quickly. And so I just think there's a lot of ways where the public would be happier to support the eventual goal of transit. They support that, but they're tired of the city doing study after study after study on the issue. So just keep that in mind as you're about to take your vote, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
I guess I can't ask a question, huh? Of John? Okay.
All right. Go ahead, Mike.
Not a cancel on meetings, I, I just want to make one comment. I'm, I'm a very strong supporter of transit. I'm sorry, it's 1343 East Kingman Place. And I have been ever since I, before I got on that group, and I thought it was an excellent group and did really good work. All I think is, we didn't have our job well defined last time by you. You're the policy guys, and you're the one who got elected and talked to all the people. And I was trying to suggest a tool which might help you provide some high-level policy guidelines so that we don't ask the technical group to be making policy. And I, I know it costs money, and I know it's work, and I still think we ought to do it. Thank you very much. I know you read that, and I appreciate your concern.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and second on the floor. Correct? So it's still on the floor. So Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
No, and I'll tell you why. I would like to see a performer, a financial performer that shows what this money does, how much we're going to have to come up with down the line on this. These things lose money, we know that. And, and as I say, I hate to vote for something that we get a, get a plan for and then find out we really can't afford it, or it's not cost-effective. So that's, I'm, I'm going to vote no on it until I see a financial performer that says that it would be a benefit to us.
Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Please take a look at Mike's suggestions in there, and maybe we could sit down to some time in the next week. I vote yes. Okay. Our regular, back to the, the agenda, I, I one, consider ordinance number 3235.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to sign a land lease agreement between the city of Casa Grande and Cannon Hill for land lease that lies under site number seven within the city of Casa Grande's municipal airport private hangar lease plan. Quite a few years ago, we had developed a, a lease site plan for the airport. It had to do with where our utilities were located out there, and these sites were adjacent to those utilities, so made it right for development without, with very little additional infrastructure costs associated with that. It allows for private hangar ownership on a land lease at the airport because we are unable to sell property on a federally obligated airport. So this is how people can build private hangars out there, use those for a period of time. In this instance, it's a 30-year lease with a 10-year option and for an annual lease payment. And then at the end of that lease period, the city has the option to take ownership of that asset at the end of that period. So we have negotiated that deal, 30-year deal with a 10-year option with Mr. Hill, and are ready to execute that with your authority. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. I have none, so seeing none, we'll call for ordinance, please Gloria.
Excuse me. Ordinance number 3235. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the lease of lot number seven located at the Casa Grande Municipal Airport to Cannon Hill as identified in the Casa Grande Municipal Airport Private Hangar Lease Area Plan, and authorizing the execution of the lease agreement by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 3235 as presented.
Second.
Can I get a roll call vote, please Gloria?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, is the next one yours too? I two?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council award a contract for professional services to Sunrise Engineering in an amount not to exceed 70,000 for providing professional services to update our sanitary sewer capacity. The city is required by the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality to provide capacity assurances for adequacy within our sanitary sewer collection network to allow development to occur. Our last update was done, I think it was eight years ago, by Sunrise Engineering. They've done all of our master planning for us and have all of the information in their database. So it only made sense that we have them do the update for the city. And this will provide us a new update on those capacities so that we know where our sewer collection system currently has those pinch points, where we then need to start designing improvements to take care of those capacity issues so that we can continue to support development throughout the city. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, does this include our sewer lines too? It's not just the capacity of the sewer plant?
That's correct. This has nothing to do with the capacity of the sewer plant. Although, looking at that sewer capacity, it'll help us plan for what those improvements should be and where.
So for example, if a lot of development comes out around the mall, this will tell us what capacity we need for future development?
That is correct. So a good example would be a lot of the interest in some of the land around the west side of I-10, south of Florence. We do have capacity issues in that area. And if you recall, in this year's budget, we have several projects identified in there to look at capacity issues and designing solutions for that. This is just going to be looking at the rest of the city and to help support what that decision might be as we move forward with design.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, seeing none, then roll call for ordinance number, please Gloria.
Ordinance number 3236. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Sunrise Engineering, Inc. to provide for the city of Casa Grande sanitary sewer master plan capacity analysis update, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing the execution of a contract, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3236 as presented.
Second.
Right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, item I three?
Last one, I promise. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services contract with Hilgarth Wilson in an amount not to exceed 120,107, excuse me, in an amount of 120,177 plus a 15% contingency in an amount not to exceed 138,203 to perform final design of storm drainage and retention improvements as well as a archaeological clearance requirement for drainage facilities in our industrial park out at the airport. As city council may recall, in phase two and three of the industrial park, the design concept was to have regional retention so that the landowners, when they purchased those properties, could develop almost 100% of those sites without having to provide on-site retention. And as we went through a recent development review, we determined through that study with Hilgarth Wilson's help that the retention and delivery system out there was not adequate to, to handle that. So now we're ready to take that next step based on their alternatives to go ahead and do that final design, and then we'll be coming back with a construction contract once they finish with that design. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just to give council also some insight, there is some archaeological sites out there that are in those, in our drainage areas. So there is a process that the state makes us go through to remediate the, the site and potentially collect, collect any archaeological artifacts and then place them in the proper, proper areas that the state has, so just an FYI on that.
Following up on the mayor's comments, the, it, it regards a homestead, it says in here. Is there any Native American archaeology or anything in that area that would be, need to be looked at, or do we know yet?
I'm not familiar with what exactly was there. I just know that in the original construction, the site was identified, and the development of our retention basin was done around that site. In order to provide the capacity we need out there, we need to finish that review, do whatever we need to, to protect the, the materials that are there, and then remove them appropriately so that we can then expand the size of that retention basin. So we're not sure what all is there. We, we avoided it the last time, but we have no choice this time.
Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, seeing none, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please Gloria.
Ordinance number 3237. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Hilgarth Wilson LLC to provide storm water system design and archaeological services for the Casa Grande Airport Industrial Park, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of num, um, ordinance number 3237 as presented. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next item on the agenda is I four, consider ordinance number 3238. Mr. Hardisty?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. Staff is recommending that the mayor and council approve a purchase agreement with SunCor Industries doing businesses desert golf carts in the amount of, in an amount not to exceed 185,520 dollars for the purchase of 70 Yamaha golf carts for use at Dave White Golf Course. This agreement would also include trading in the current fleet of 60 Easy Go carts. The current fleet of carts at Dave White has been purchased, was purchased in 2016 and has been used for the last four golf seasons. During that time, the course has played over 200,000 rounds of golf, setting records for both rounds and revenue. The fleet has been assessed by staff and determined that it's reached its economical useful life and qualifies for replacement. These cars come with a very good trade-in value and provide good resources to assist the cost of the new fleet. A couple items of note, we've had over 5,000 in repairs in the last six months. The current fleet is out of warranty, and we've had a part in the clutch system that was replaced on every single golf cart. It's currently failing again. So for instance, in August, we had over 20% of the fleet out of service. The recommended cart that we're bringing to you tonight is the Yamaha Drive Two with QuietTech technology. This model offers the quietest and smoothest ride in the industry for gas golf carts. It also has the best gas mileage of any cart we researched. We did receive three bids on this purchase. Two of the bids, we disqualified because they did not meet our standards. There is one item of a no, though, in the braking system. We specified enclosed disc brakes. All three companies bid a model with drum brakes. We did some further research and found that drum brakes are now standard on all golf carts. So this is deemed insignificant in the bid process. We are recommending that increasing the fleet from the current 60 to 70 golf carts. Four years ago, the fleet was 70, and we, we purchased only 60 at that time to meet the budget. On many busy days in the summer and winter, we run out of golf carts, forcing our patrons to wait or walk. Each of the last three winter seasons, we've rented extra golf carts to try to alleviate this, but are still running into issues. We do not see this need for carts going down, as currently, many customers ride individually due to COVID restrictions, and our rounds keep increasing slightly year over year. We feel that an increase in the fleet would provide better customer service and spread the usage of the golf carts throughout the fleet, hoping for maintenance costs going down in the future. The total price of each cart is 4,650. The outfit for additional features is 186 per cart for items like windshield, seat bottles, and coolers. The trade-in value of the current fleet is 2,550 per cart, making the final purchase price of 70 golf carts at 185,520. The budget for this purchase is 250,000. I have offered several alternatives in the RCA, should the council want to move in a different direction. At this time, I'd take questions. Yes?
So are you imagining the idea that there are people that will just walk away if they can't have their cart?
Well.
In other words, we're running low on carts? In other words, we're running low on carts because twenty percent's out of commission, and now we have people go, "Well, I guess I'm not golfing today."
It puts a crimp on our time, for sure, because the golf industry's done on tee times. And so if you're waiting for cart, many people do not play if they can't ride. Now, we do have a decent amount of people that will walk. But if, if there's people that are waiting, that puts everybody behind them also waiting.
Right, and so now you've got that all bumping back, and that doesn't give us a very good reputation there.
Sure, creates an issue for, for revenue, potential revenue if people are waiting and not playing.
Exactly.
And some could possibly leave, but that would obviously be their choice.
I'm glad we, we put these on this replacement plan. Like, I remember years ago, when we traded them in, we were getting like two hundred or three hundred dollars a cart because they were so- And now it's, you know, more than half the price of a new cart that we're getting for the trade-in, so I like, I like that part of it.
Yeah, we would have significant repairs to make if we kept the fleet. We've tried to keep the repair costs at a minimum because we knew we were bringing this topic to you, so there's a lot of things that we need to do to update them if we kept them.
I just have a question. I don't golf. How are those things motivated? Are they electric? Are they fuel?
Nope, these are gas.
Gas, okay.
Yeah, we, we don't have the capability for electric carts because we don't have the setup for electric in the cart shed.
No, I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah. They do make electric golf carts, though.
Lisa?
Do we always switch out all of them at one time? Have we ever done it? I just can't remember, because I know we've replaced them in the past, but does it make sense to do half and half, or, oh? Is that something you guys talked about or something?
Well, no, I was getting some information from Larry since he has more historical knowledge than I do.
Yeah, because you haven't been here as long.
Right, right. Larry's telling me that at, at certain points in our career, we've replaced a certain number of carts every year.
Okay.
Where I worked previously, we, we did a variety of different ways, methods to do it. Obviously, when you bid more carts, you get a better price, and you get better trade-in. I've seen a course that bought ten per year, every year, and tried to rotate them. What we found when we did that was that the oldest carts, nobody wanted to use. You know, they'd say, "I'll wait. I want that better one that's coming in off of the one." You know, and then, and then your maintenance costs were not consistent because you get different models.
Right.
And sometimes during the bid process, you might have completely different companies. And so then you've got two or three different companies, two or three different models.
For, and for maintenance and everything.
To me, it's cleaner. My recommendation is cleaner to trade them all in at once.
Okay.
Just speaking from personal experience, because I do golf out there, they, they even look for the cart numbers now. Because some carts are faster than other ones. I'm just saying.
Oh, that's good to know.
And these are, these are all the same age carts.
Like Disneyland when you wait for the green cart.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, the green one's faster.
Exactly. Well, if you've had one break down on you, you've remembered that number.
Or doesn't have brakes or something. Anybody else have any other questions? Steve? Okay, seeing none, then I'll entertain an ordinance number, please Gloria.
Ordinance number 3238, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from SunCor Industries, Inc., DBA Desert Golf Carts to provide Yamaha golf carts for the Dave White Municipal Golf Course, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing the execution of a contract, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for the approval of ordinance number 3238 as presented?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next item is item I-5, ordinance number 3239.
Thank you, I have this one also. Staff is recommending that mayor and city council authorize a purchase agreement with Cactus Asphalt in an amount not to exceed one hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-four cents for the repair of asphalt parking lots at Dave White Park, Vilago Park, and Paul Mason Sports Complex. Staff is requesting this authorization using an existing Penale County Job Order Contract Number 175923. City has contracted with Cactus Asphalt Pass and pleased with the work they have done for the city. In fact, I believe in the consent agenda, there was a previous item with the same company. Routine maintenance of the asphalt parking lots has not been done for several years due to budget constraints and other priorities. We recently assessed the largest and most utilized parks and prioritized the work needed in these locations. We also utilized Kevin's public work staff to give us some recommendations and guidelines as we're moving through the process. The parking lot at Paul Mason Sports Complex and portions of the lot at Dave White Park will need the most extensive repairs and maintenance. This will include a little bit of removal and replacement in the worst spots, a lot of cracked ceiling and seal coating in the entire parking lot. Vilago Park and other portions of Dave White Park will only need standard asphalt maintenance. The project was previously approved in the CIP process at one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's slightly over that, the JOC that we received is slightly over that at one fifty-two to nineteen. Because all four areas can be done for this amount, staff is recommending that we fund from two different sources to go ahead and complete the project all at one time. So, a hundred and fifty thousand would come from Project 19020 in the CIP. The remaining twenty-two hundred and nineteen dollars with the recommendation from finance would come from unused funds in the Fourth of July event. And at that, I would stand for questions.
Anyone have any questions? Oh, sorry, Lisa.
As far as the time, you know, because of course now we're getting into busier time when people are out at the parks and stuff. So that's my only concern is, you know, as you do it, especially at Paul Mason, you know, are you going to do it in sections where people can still park and, and get around the parks?
Yeah, we're, we're definitely going to have to work around that, work around the schedule. We want to keep all parts of the park open at different times. For instance, the dog park will, will need to figure out a way to, to have people still utilize the dog park. We would look at our, our game and practice schedule, and, but we will keep a portion of every park open. We'll never close the whole park just for the parking lot.
Okay.
Well, Paul Mason has some other alternatives too, because it's got dirt, some dirt parking.
Correct.
But that dog parking, that's a good point, because I'm, I'm one of those dog parking people. You will see me there. Now I have my new dog, my, we adopted a dog, so, um, but, you know, but there, people really do. I mean, there are regulars there, but so, you know, that part of the park, it's a little bit tougher if-
And, and Dave White Park has the same situation. Well, Vilago does too, so we're just, we'll have to work on all of it. We, we did this kind of maintenance at the rec center when we had a flaw in the, in the asphalt, and we did it half at a time.
Okay, good.
So we were able to direct traffic to the other half.
Do you, do you plan in the next few months to get going on that, or what is the timeline?
Yes, you know, after we do the procurement policy and then follow the waiting period, we'll get on their schedule as soon as we can and get a PO.
Okay.
We're a little bit at the mercy of their schedule, but I'll try to get in ahead of Kevin.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Bob?
I may, I may have a lapse in memory here, but didn't we own or buy a paving machine to do parking lots?
Road, road repair?
Yes, that's correct. We do have our own paving machine. However, the treatments that we're doing are preventative maintenance, and we do not have that equipment or the capability of providing that maintenance treatment. So what they're doing is they're doing a seal coat, crack sealing, and those types of things. So if we were going to go in and do pavement replacement, we could do that ourselves.
Okay, okay, I was just curious.
And just another comment on the timing. We're going to have a lot of people drop over of heat stroke if we try to do this work in the middle of the summer, which would be the ideal time. So, we are at the mercy of the contractors, and typically, this work's going to be done in the spring of the year. Our contractor, I think, is scheduled for February or March, and I'm guessing they'll probably bring his project on as a part of that schedule.
Kevin, is Cactus working on the south side?
No, that's actually Allison Mills, our local contractor. And they're about two-thirds of the way done, so.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please Gloria.
Ordinance number 3239, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Cactus Asphalt, a division of Cactus Transport, Inc. for the asphalt pavement maintenance and repair services for the city's parks, parking lots, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Cactus Asphalt, a division of Cactus Transport, Inc., in accordance with the terms and conditions submitted to Penale County, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3239 as presented?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, item J. There's two action items on here. One, I need a motion to accept Fred Tucker's resignation from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. First of all, thanking Fred Tucker for his service on the board. And next then, I'll need a motion to approve Rick Peters, who is here tonight. Rick, stand up. So, thank you very much for, for volunteering. We appreciate it.
I'd move to accept him, anybody with that motivation.
We doubled your pay, so, so you should be, you should be set for retirement for the rest of your retirement. Yeah, and, and I'm sorry that you were kind of at the end of the agenda, so apologize. All right, great. Well, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I'll take, entertain a motion to approve Mr. Peters.
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, congratulations. You have been sentenced. Thank you, Rick. And please, if you see Fred, I know you talk to him, so if you see Fred, tell him we said thank you too. Okay, thank you. All right, item, we don't have any item K, right? Nope. Okay, move to the item Ls. Another couple gentlemen who have been here patiently all night. Serve them right to make public hearings. Always their last on our agenda, so apologize. Resolution number 4360.19.1. Mr. Tice?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, actually, these items L1 and L2 are related. One's an amendment to the general plan, a minor amendment, and the other is actually an amendment to the PAD. So if it's okay with you, I'm going to make the presentation for both items at the same time.
Yeah, please do.
So, the Desert Rose Development Group is requesting approval of a minor general plan amendment and an amendment to the Casa Grande Crossings PAD in order to construct a two-hundred-and-eighty-four unit gated apartment complex on fourteen acres located within parcel three of the Casa Grande Crossings. You know, we, we don't, we don't often see minor amendments to general plans. You've, you've considered major amendments to the general plan, which by state law is only once a year. However, our code does allow for minor amendments as well to be considered at any time in conjunction with rezonings. So that's what you're seeing tonight, and I'll talk a little bit more about what the actual minor amendment is. And of course, a PAD amendment, you're quite familiar with. I'll back up a little bit. So the site, fourteen acre site is on Camino Mercado, south of Florence, just across from where the U-Haul project is in south of the Palm Center.
By Dutch Bros.
Pardon?
Just down from Dutch Bros.
Down from Dutch Brothers, yes, sir. So, the, the proposal, the reason that the minor general plan amendment and the PAD is needed is because the applicant proposes to build this apartment complex. Planning Commission did consider a minor, a major site plan in conjunction with these two applications. That major site plan is approved by Planning Commission contingent upon the major, the general plan amendment and the zone, the PAD amendment being approved by council. So the actual major site plan for this does show the two-hundred-and-eighty-four apartments consisting of ten three-story buildings on the perimeter of the site, as you can see there, and ten two-story buildings more on the interior. The two-story buildings have been placed there because the adjacent land use to the west and to the south is currently programmed for single-family, and to make it a little more compatible, the lower height buildings were put on those perimeters. So the current zoning for the Casa Grande Crossings PAD is for multi-family, but it limits the total number of dwellings to two-hundred-and-seven, so there's an increase in numbers of dwellings that the applicant is proposing. So a major amendment to the PAD is required to increase those and to change the development standards. However, we can't do a PAD amendment unless we're in compliance with the general plan, and in this case, we're not. The current general plan designation is commerce and business. Commerce and business, although it allows multi-family in our R3 zone, it does not allow multi-family in a PAD. That's one of the changes we're going to be making to our new general plan that I mentioned earlier tonight. So, essentially, they could not build the apartment, or not very easily build the apartment in the commerce and business. However, they are asking for a change to community center. You can see the community center land use category in red just to the north of it. It kind of touches at that one point, and so the proposal is to change it from commerce and business to community center because community center allows both commercial and multi-family residential land uses. Essentially, this area is going to become more of a mixed-use area with both residential and commercial and service uses. So that's the proposal for the general plan from commerce and business to community center. As I mentioned, our current code does allow these types of general plan amendments to be considered anytime in conjunction with the zone change. If you meet certain criteria, you can see the matrix in terms of going from what land use classification to another. And so this case, it's going from commerce and business to community center. It's allowed as long as it's not over twenty acres. In this case, it's fourteen acres, so a minor amendment is allowable application to be considered. As far as the PAD amendment, this is part of the Casa Grande Crossings PAD. It is a site that's programmed for multi-family, however, for a little bit lower density than what the applicants are proposing to build. This shows you the actual current PAD and its proposed amendments. The units that it's approved for is two-hundred-and-seven. The applicants are proposing two-eighty-four. The current density is at about four-eleven, and they're proposing to push that up to about twenty DUs, which is allowed in the community center land use category. And they're also, it's also limited to all two-story buildings, and they are proposing to have two-story and three-story buildings. This three-story would be as tall as forty feet, so there's a slight increase in building height. PAD amendments have to follow a, comply with a certain specific criteria. They've all been covered in the staff report that we attached to the RCA, so I'm not going to talk about all of these. If you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Why don't you know that the Planning Commission at their September meeting did recommend approval of both the general plan amendment and the PAD amendment to city council. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Paul. Does anyone have any questions? I know this is a public hearing, so I can throw the questions to you all first, and then we'll open the public hearing. Bob?
We have a hotel approved for just east of there, don't we?
It's across, yeah, almost across the street. We do, yes. South of the U-Haul.
My, my only concern is the current status and the future of Camino Mercado. It, my, my concern is a public safety concern. We're, we're building a dead-in, one way in, one way out for potentially a lot of people. If we have a hotel and, and these apartments here, on, on its face- a lot of people. If we have a hotel and these apartments here, on its face, I'm not against the project, but I think we're creating a potential problem there from a public safety standpoint. Anyway, it's just a comment. I know you can't fix it as part of this project, but...
Is it Camino Mercado supposed to be extended down to Early?
It is, Mayor. It's designed to go to Early as a collector. The problem is, is that streets are typically extended in conjunction with new development versus as a city CIP, for example. So, as Councilman Huddleston points out, he's right, is that Camino Mercado would not be connected until development occurs. The good news is, is the applicant for this parcel also owns some of the surrounding properties and is gearing up to do some additional development. So where are, he will be, I'm pretty sure, extending Warren Way over to the west to connect to that, that street network, and eventually extending Camino Mercado as well in the near future. So, we actually are seeing a lot of development activity in this particular corridor.
Thank you.
Matt?
We just had a big conversation about not having enough affordable, attainable workforce housing. And here, this is, looks like a nice project. There's no neighbors there yet to object to this, which is good, so they know what they're getting. And Councilman Fitzgibbons, I had a lot of conversations about this at one time, because from all the league stuff we go to. And, you know, as a city, we don't build, building, you know, we don't build apartments, we don't build houses, but what we can do is zoning stuff, and that's in our thing. And so we can help these guys, or this group, I'm sorry, to put in, you know, the right place, the right product.
Yep.
And I tend us just to the east, so. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, then I will open the floor to the, for the public hearing. This, and we'll open the public hearing. Can I open it for both? Right?
No, we should do the public hearings one at a time.
One at a time.
Public hearing, then vote.
Then vote, then, okay, okay. All right. So this is a public hearing on item L one. Resolution four-three-six-zero-point-one-nine-point-one. Please state your name for me and your address.
Jeff Shumway, two-zero-three-four-three North Hayden Road in Scottsdale, eight-five-two-five-five. I'm the president of Desert Rose Development Group, and I just wanted to, number one, follow-up on Mr. Tice. We have now purchased the one-hundred-and-thirty-two acres that is west of and south of parcel number three. Everything that you see in yellow there. We are also working with the city on Warren Way. There will be a sewer extension that will actually run from the corner of Warren Way and Camino Mercado, west to Henness Boulevard to tie into the sewer there. As we tie all of that in, Warren Way will end up being improved and will tie in, and I apologize, I drove by it this evening on the way in, but the Extended Stay Hotel has a traffic light on Florence Boulevard. That road will be extended down to Warren Way, so to address your concern, we'll have exits to Florence Boulevard in two separate directions. Now, I'd like to tell you that we'll get down to Early Road right away, but who knows. The other thing I want to do is just let you know how much we've appreciated working with the city staff. They have been extraordinarily proactive, in our view. We do work in larger counties and larger cities, and it is a pleasure to be in Casa Grande. They, for example, the sewer extension. In a lot of areas, that could have been a real problem. They were very proactive. We actually, I believe, have it engineered now. If not, we're really close. We're working with the adjacent landowner. It looks like we're gonna get that dedicated as a roadway that the sewer will run up under. So, we're just happy to be here. We appreciate your support. We appreciate the staff support, and they really have been great to work with. So, if you have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Shumway. Appreciate it. Go ahead, Lisa.
Just a comment, and you've been here in the meeting for a while, so you heard that this is definitely a product that we need in our community. So, you know, thank you. And I think, like Councilmember Herman said, this is a great location, being close to the freeway. You know, there's a lot of people that are commuting to either Phoenix and Tucson, so I think that's a great location. But I did want to tell you, hopefully, since they've been, the staff has been so good, there's other areas in our community where maybe you can build another one or two of them. Don't forget about us.
One of the reasons we bought the additional one-hundred-and-thirty-two acres is because if you run down Early Road to the west, you run into a new little business that's being built out there. And so we're hopeful, we're hopeful to get extended down to Early Road so that people can make that drive straight down to Lucid. And, no, we'd like to do more in Casa Grande.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else here from the public who'd like to speak? Is a public hearing? Okay. Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and then call for a resolution, please, on L one.
Resolution number, resolution number four-three-six-zero-point-one-nine-point-one. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting a minor amendment to the City of Casa Grande General Plan 2020, as adopted by resolution number four-three-six-zero, and as previously amended by changing the land use designation from commerce and business to community center for approximately fourteen-point-three-nine acres known as parcel three of the Casa Grande crossings planned area development, generally located at the west side of north Camino Mercado and south of east Florence Boulevard, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number four-three-six-zero-point-one-nine-point-one as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Powell.
Absolutely, too.
Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right. The next public hearing item is L two, which Paul has already explained. So I'm gonna, does the council have any other questions on this item?
Nope.
Okay. Seeing none, then I will open the public hearing on item L two. Anyone? Anyone? I just saw Ferris Bueller again last night.
Oh, did you?
Okay. So seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll call for an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number one-one-seven-eight-point-one-five-seven-point-four. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a major amendment to a portion of the Casa Grande crossings planned area development adopted for property generally located at the west side of north Camino Mercado and south of the east Florence Boulevard, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move for the adoption of ordinance number one-one-seven-eight-point-one-five-seven-point-zero-four.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right. I think that's it for tonight, although we still have reports. So I think I'll start over here with you, Lisa. If you would like to go first.
Sure. Just wanted to thank everyone. You know, the census is over, so we're not gonna be bringing, we're bummed, we're bummed that it was cut off early, but, you know, but it is over, and we'll see what the number is, where Casagrand ended up coming in. Is it, was it still in the sixties?
Yeah.
Sixty-something percent? Yeah, so the mayor will, but I just wanted to thank Latonya. You know, she's just so good and so, just, I mean, just great to work with. So, really, she did such a great job. Oh, you have the numbers? Oh, he's gonna give me the numbers.
You can give them.
So, the national response was sixty-seven percent. Arizona self-response was sixty-four-point-one, and Pinal self-response fifty-eight-point-four, and it looks like Casagrand was sixty-three-point-seven. So...
That's just the self-response.
Yeah, for the self.
Those who reported, not the ones that went, we went out.
Door-to-door and everything. So we'll see in the end where it came in, where it comes in. So, but thank you, and to the staff and Latonya and the mayor with all the support. We'll see, hopefully, it comes back. And also the school districts, all their help, and Ralph and Blanca Varela. They were so involved in getting this done, so thank you to them. Just a reminder to everyone that the application for the COVID relief, the PPE funding is available. It's online now. So any business, nonprofit, church, that has, can submit receipts that they spent money on COVID for their business, and they are allowed to get twenty-five-hundred dollars back if they apply for this funding. So that's out right now. So please apply. And it's just a small application, isn't that right, Stephen? I mean, it's just...
Just have to show your receipts.
Just show the receipts and for a certain time period, and it's up to twenty-five-hundred dollars. So please tell your friends, family, businesses, everyone, to make sure they go on, online and get that application. And as far as holidays, I wanted to, I know Steve Hardesty is still here, but I just wanted to thank you and your staff for your creative ideas on moving forward with holidays. You know, it's been such a tough time for families, and, you know, with holidays coming up, it's just, it's hard. You know, how do we plan? So I think some of the ideas that you guys have come up with, with the Halloween, the fall fun, month-long, there's different activities. If you go on their website, you know, they have a creative clue game that the mayor, I mean, I haven't really looked on how the game works, but it's like clue.
The city's gonna help me find my gavel.
Okay, okay. So that's a fun, creative way.
The gavel's gonna go missing.
Okay. So the city gets to find it. So, and then there's like activity kits that are available for families if they want to go and pick them up. So, in a virtual contest, costume contest and everything. So, you know, so there are some activities. And then, of course, with Christmas and the Electric Light Parade, we're trying to move forward on a different way of celebrating that. So I just wanted to thank you for that and tell, you know, families to hang in there. We're gonna get through this together, and, you know, we'll still be able to celebrate. And some of the tradition's just a little bit different this year. So, so thank you.
You're with us. Mr. Powell?
Well, I'm gonna make John happy. In my driving around, there is construction going on everywhere. I mean, it's pervasive. Right, John?
Mayor.
No, I, I really don't, I know one thing that is a problem. Larry, his cowboys are playing with Cardinals right now, and he doesn't know how they're doing.
I'll check. Yes, you do.
Did the Cardinals win?
They did the council big and see.
That means the Cardinals won.
Yeah.
Woo-hoo. Sorry, Larry.
My husband's happy with my son.
Larry, I was trying to help you.
That means I'll be happy.
Oh.
All right. Lisa? Or Mary, I'm sorry.
Whoa.
I haven't done it in a while.
And you did. He called you Lisa.
It just turned around.
Spread the love around. Mary?
So I have a happy husband, but a sad son on the game. And speaking of football, we've been enjoying over the last three weeks watching the football teams play, the high school games play, and it's just been so nice. The kids are out there playing, the cheerleaders are, the spirit lines doing their thing, the bands out there doing their thing and all, and I'm just really proud of them. And can I say, go Union?
Yeah. You have a grandson that's doing pretty darn good, don't you?
I do. I have a grandson that plays for Union. He's a senior. And that, and then I want to, I do want to thank everybody. John, I mean, so many people were part of this general plan, and just going through it, I mean, it really addresses a lot of issues. Yeah, there's always gonna be something and that, but I can't even imagine taking, and I don't know who really did this, that took all of those meetings and all of those comments and everything else and put them into this nice little book, but it's wonderful. And I really hope that, are we gonna have copies of this, I would assume, at the library and that, if people really wanted to go through this?
It's online.
Well, I know it's online, but a lot of people, I want to touch, this, I want to touch. I'm a very much online person. No, I want...
You can download it.
I want the book, the book.
Then you can print it off on your own printer.
Could you please put a couple of copies in each library so that our citizens can go, because it is a beautiful book. It really is. It's very beautifully put together, and I just want to thank them.
Give them your book after you're done reading.
And I just want to say that I was very disappointed that our census was cut short. And that's all I'm gonna say about that.
Okay. Matt?
Thank you. Did the shredding last, last weekend not immediately pass with the one before?
Oh, I forgot. Thank you.
And did over two tons of paper, and the youth commission got about sixteen-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars.
Wow.
And people were saying how much they were saving because they're expecting it in spring, when we had to cut it down because of COVID. We had a great non-contact type activity. Kevin and Clarence, the supervisor out there, sent their guys, and there was some new guys, and I forgot to tell them we needed the blue roll-off bins. So they went right back, got them cleaned up, and thank goodness. So that worked wonderful, and the kids had a good time. And thanks to First American Credit Union for sponsoring, they pay all the cost of the shredding trucks for the youth commission. And they had two trucks out there, and it was great. So, that's really all I have to say.
Did you get your water fixed?
Uh, no. I was able to shower, though, thank you.
Oh, thank heavens for Donna.
Donna?
Well, most people mentioned everything, but I want to end on a good note tonight. I mean, recently, we had, we had a young man in our community, a middle school, that had taken upon himself, and I don't know if Steve knows about it, but he didn't do it because he had to do community service, or because he was in trouble, or for a scout project. He just decided one day to go out to Velago and filled up trash bags. And his mother was really proud of him and had posted on social media, and I got a hold of it, and ended up corresponding with him by mail. And he wrote me back, and he was out behind Siegel Suites this past weekend, and literally, probably half a dumpster full that kid cleaned up. And he was wearing his gloves and all that. And so I'm just, you know, we never hear about the good things that people are doing, and I know that we've had the cleanup before, and Mike and I participated in that a few weeks ago. But this young man does it just because he says he loves Casagrand and he wants it to be clean. And so he's kind of putting a challenge out there to me that he wants to do it again. And so Matt and I were talking about possibly doing something where it's more kid-oriented, and we have a lot of community groups that have been involved, but this is more student-oriented. So I just, shout out to Logan Hicks, because he is, he's done it for all the right reasons. So, that's it.
Very good.
Bob?
Thank you for sharing that.
I didn't hear the actual score of tonight's game come out, so I wanted to make sure it was on the record. Cardinals thirty-eight, Cowboys ten.
Oh.
I'm surprised you were seeing their comp.
Much more enjoyable than I did.
And Mayor, one last thing. Either through memorandum or part of a study session, can we get an update on recycling? I think that's something we need to stay on top of. I don't know that the situation has changed any at all, but if there's a crack in it, I think we need to exploit that and get back in that business.
Yeah, we can certainly put that on a study session. It might not be till January, but...
Anyway, yeah.
Yeah, but we'll get it on the list.
It's not urgent. Thank you.
All right. Go Cardinals.
Oh, to make it worse, my son is married to a Cardinals fan. So, yeah, they're a house divided and hearts together or something.
Hey, hey, it's my turn. Hey, hey, it's my turn.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were playing Cardinals.
Just to give everyone an update, I did, we did have a town hall. I had a town hall with Tom O'Halloran and the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and one other city, and I can't remember the name of the city. Anyway, last week, it was, it was pretty interesting and had an opportunity to talk about the Chamber of Commerce and what we're doing for business here as, as far as COVID and how it's, how it's affected our businesses and, and really what the chamber is doing in cooperation with the city. So it was, it was a good report. I think it came off pretty well as well. Again, just reminding everybody, the general plan is still open for input until November 1st. Is that right, Larry? I think it's November 1st. So please go online. You can put direct comments under each of the subjects. That's the best way to give feedback to the city. And I know that we're looking at all of those comments and we'll make adjustments if necessary. Just to give everybody an update on COVID, since it's my favorite subject. So right now, we're sitting at. And I, and I do want to give a shout out to the city of Casa Grande because the citizens of our community really are doing an excellent, excellent job. And I would ask and implore you to continue. I know everybody gets, is, is, I shouldn't say gets, is stir crazy. And there's this huge need to socialize. But whatever you've been doing, please continue to do it. It's, the, the virus is still here. It's still very contagious. And if you look at, if you looked at the numbers like I look at the numbers, the state of Arizona has been trending up. It's up slightly. It's not like the last time in, in July or end of June when we, when we really spiked. But it is trending up a little bit. Penal County is trending up a little bit, but we are trending down. So 8512285194 is trending down. And we actually have some amazing numbers. It's like 23322 each day. So we're, as a percentage of the county, which I, that's kind of what I look at is, is we're 17% of the population, but we are only 8.9% of the infections. So that means we're doing better than the rest of the county. So whatever you're doing, continue to do it, please. Like I said, it's still out there. We're 47.3 infections per 100,000 in our, in our community. The county's at 70. So 70 for every 100,000 and the state's at 85. And they're, those both are going up. So they get above 100, I don't know what the governor's going to do, but hopefully he won't shut us, shut us down because we're below that 100 per 100,000. So. And then just a reminder on a couple of things. There's, we have that general plan, that open house that we're having tomorrow. It's at 5:30 to, or excuse me, this is the general plan online meeting. Yes, tomorrow, 5:30 to 8:30. So we're talking about growing economy from 5:30 to 6:30, enhancing quality of life from 6:30 to 7:30. So these are the kind of the timeframes if you're interested in one versus another. And then environmental sustainability, 7:30 to 8:30. So I'm going to be hosting and I know all of you are invited, whether you come or not. But we'll be here in the chamber broadcasting that on Zoom, on YouTube and Facebook Live. So stay tuned. And then there's one other thing, and I know Lisa mentioned it, so I won't, but all the holiday stuff. Go ahead and go look online. There's a bunch of all the times and all the events. It's a lot of fun stuff. The clue game is going to be kind of a lot of fun because literally someone's going to steal my gavel and, and then the city's going to help me find it. So it should, it should be, it should be fun. The stand down for the veterans, the Penal County veterans is November 14th. So if you want to mark your calendars from 7 to noon, it's at the HOHP Transition Center, which is out on McCartney. It's the new, it was the old Horizon house that was way out there on McCartney. So please support our veterans. And then I'm super excited about the RFQ that went out. And we're looking for a request for qualifications for our community trail between Treacle and Pirrit. So that's exciting. It's really the first major piece of our trail system that we put out for, not for bid per se, but it's a request for, for qualifications.
Are those cement or are they dirt?
I think they're going to be a combination, Mr. Powell, depending on where they, where they run.
I kind of want to avoid cement because it's not good on your joints.
Anyway, sorry, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
And then building permits are going crazy. So we're at 875 building permits year to date. So go, go, go. Super exciting. And that's all I have. Anybody else? Last comment? Going once, going twice? Okay. Meeting adjourned.